Hey guys and welcome to a new show! So today we're gonna be checking out what we do in the shadows. And I'm so, so excited. Of course, I just reacted to what we do in the shadows movie and I really, really enjoyed it. I kinda wish it had more of a plot. However, the humor was so good, I loved it so much. So if the show is anything like the movie jokes wise, I think I'm gonna love this. I honestly know nothing about this show. I think maybe it takes this in New York, maybe I've seen that. But other than that, I don't know who the characters are. I don't know if this has the mockumentary format as well or not. And yeah, I have no idea about the plot. But I'm very excited to get into it, especially because I love the vampires in this universe. Like I love their powers. It's so interesting and so fun. So these vampires can fly, can turn into bats, do hypnosis. They cannot go out into the sun. And also there is that law where you're not allowed to kill another vampire. So that's just super interesting. I really love that. I don't think I've seen a show like this before, like with this type of vampires. So I'm very, very excited to check it out. You can already see this from the title, but I will be reacting to both episode 1 and episode 2 in this video. And that's gonna be the same for the rest of the seasons. Because I looked it up and I saw that the episodes mostly are around 20 minutes long, which is quite short, you know, for one video to only contain one episode. So yeah, I'm gonna be doing two in one. And I'm planning on uploading these reactions on Fridays. So make sure you're subscribed and hit that notification bell so you never miss a video. And before we jump into the video, I want to let you guys know that I have a Patreon, where you are actually able to watch the full, unedited reaction to this show, to the movie and to a bunch of other stuff. So if that's something you might find interesting, the link to that will be in the description down below. And without further ado, let's just jump straight into it.
It's nightfall.
Oh, it starts the same way as the movie did. Okay, I think this is also mockumentary style, love that.
It's very dangerous, I mean, they are vampires after all. We can go in.
Oh, he's a human? Wait, is our main character an actual human?
It's time to rise. Okay.
Okay, is he gonna rise?
Guillermo, it is dark. I think it is the last.
That is so awkward.
Being a vampire is familiar is like being a best friend who, who's also a slave.
Yeah, most of my best friends are also my slaves.
Tomorrow night marks the 10 year anniversary since I started working for my master. I think he's planning something pretty special.
Oh, honey.
I think he's gonna make me a vampire.
Yeah, I don't think that's happening, but I would love to be wrong.
He awakened.
There he is? Oh, that's so cool. I love the way he takes it out of the coffin.
Very cool master, very scary. Thank you.
Not scary, but definitely cool. Oh, it's the same music as well. I love it.
Nadja Lazlo.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you come downstairs for a second, please?
Oh, we have a lady vampire. Fun.
We have received a letter. I'd like to read it in this, just a formality.
It'll sound exactly the same if you read it here than if you read it in there.
I'm not going to disagree with you, but it's not the point. I was very farouche soldier in Ottoman Empire, which meant a lot of killing, a lot of pillaging.
The good old days.
People would say, "Please, don't pillage me." And I would say, "No, I'm pillaging everyone, you included."
Well, at least it doesn't discriminate.
Nando, the relentless. Because I just never relent.
Love him already.
Last night, there were all these people down there shouting and screaming half drunk.
Where did they find the alcohol?
No, they were half drunk.
Oh, makes more sense.
Please, finish a whole victim before moving on to a next one, okay? It's very unhygienic. I think I know who's leaving them down there, but I don't want to say. It's not hygienic!
How dare you.
Nadja is so overdone.
The problems with living without our vampires are the vampires I have chosen to stay with. Nando is like...
Oh damn!
And Lazlo is my big crazy wild bear and we love to chase each other around the house. I'm gonna fucking kill you!
That's how I chase my dog as well. I'm yelling, "I'm gonna kill you!" and she's loving it.
His village was very badly affected by leprosy and the plague.
What is he wearing? That is amazing.
And I myself did contract leprosy, but I was quite lucky because it couldn't be seen. It was only one part of my anatomy.
Well, I can see it.
Anyway.
Was it his dick?
I threw back the curtain when I saw the most beautiful woman I had ever seen. I was hypnotized.
I used hypnosis on him.
Which I found out later. We were about to make love when she turned into this hideous leathery bat thing.
What is that drawing? Oh my god. Ooh, I see, who's the boss?
Close the door.
The door's closed, ma'am.
Close it more. More. We have received this letter from Baron Afanas.
No way, who's that?
He's coming to visit us.
Holy shit.
Silence Guillermo, vampire comments only.
Don't put me to Guillermo.
The Baron is a firm believer that vampires should rule the world. I think the main purpose for the Baron's visit is to find out whether we as vampires have populated America.
Don't think so.
Baron Afanas is a very charming member of the vampire royalty.
There's a vampire royalty?
We enjoyed a very intense, very long sexual affair. It was pretty wild, lots of acrobatic stuff.
Oh my god, what is that picture?
The Baron and I enjoyed a very intense sex affair. Very animalistic, acrobatic stuff, you might say.
God, bye vampires, I love it.
Guillermo, two virgins by tomorrow evening.
When the Baron arrives, we shall feast on virgin blood.
Vampire only laughing.
Should we tell Colin Robinson?
Lazlo, that is a terrible idea.
Who's Colin Robinson?
What would ruin the evening?
Is it him?
And I am what's known as a psychic vampire or energy vampire. This is my office. Energy vampires drain people's energy merely by talking to them.
Actual versus budget year to date.
That is so fucking funny.
In fact, you probably know an energy vampire. We're the most common kind.
Yeah, you are.
We are daywalkers, not affected by the sun.
That is incredibly funny.
We are the only kind of vampire that can drain another vampire's energy. It's very cool.
Oh, I love this so much.
He's made a lot of comments recently, like, "I'm going to make you a vampire." This is a little coffin toy that, uh, I hope to be in one of these one day. There's still a few places to find rare gems.
LARPing stands for live action role playing.
In regular life, I'm just Jonathan.
Oh, these poor virgins, no!
Will we be able to touch the swords?
Oh, you'll touch the sword.
Oh no!
We moved here from Europe about 200 years ago because there was a lot of prejudice against vampires at that time.
How rude of them, honestly. I'm so sorry for my race.
We've been very careful not to stand out, which is why we're both dressed down. A good evening!
Go back to your own country.
What the fuck did you just say? Begone.
Just suck their blood, I'm absolutely starving, they're perfect.
No, I'm furious, you just insulted me, I'm in fifth gear, we should kill them.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, we should suck their blood.
Yes.
What?
Oh, that was so cool. Oh gross and wasteful.
Why would you walk home when you could turn into a bat? Bat?
Bat? That's so cool, I love it.
Get me some glitter. I'm going to sprinkle it on my face and on my body, like Twilight. So deliciously macabre. Vipity paper.
Okay, that line fucking took me out.
This is pretty macabre.
You can set fire to things? I love these vampires.
But sometimes it's a little too familiar, you know what I mean? I mean, he's always just there.
I think it's good, master.
I mean, he works really hard, he's just not great at it. I don't like saying this kind of thing in front of him, of course. Sorry Guillermo, I don't like saying this kind of thing in front of you.
Oh, poor Guillermo.
Recently, I have been seeing another man.
How dare you? What about Lazlo?
He doesn't see me though, because I sneak behind him.
You're sucking someone, why? Did you fall in love with a human?
I watch him in the night, in secret.
You? I didn't need to see that.
I was in a very passionate love affair with a human man called Gregor. He got decapitated in battle. I don't think...
Poor Gregor.
I think it is him. I think it is my reincarnated ex-boyfriend Gregor, with his head.
Put it on June.
With his head?
Your finger is the pen? Okay, that's weird. Okay, that's nothing. Both of you for some reason aren't registering here.
That's so interesting. How come it doesn't work for vampires?
I think the Baron might be here to see me become a vampire.
Oh honey, sweetie, he needs to be protected at all costs.
Gregor, it is you.
My name is Jeff.
Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff Sackler.
Really? Jeff Sackler?
Yeah.
She immediately fell out of love with him?
Hi. Are you virgins?
I don't see how that's relevant.
I'm actually in a relationship online, but we've yet to meet, IRL.
Oh, honey.
No, 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 no!
What was that?
Protector of the people.
Oh no, not, not really him.
Nadja!
Do you remember that first time that we made love and it was so passionate that I accidentally cut off your head?
That's how Gregor died, that is incredible.
Squeezing until my needs were met. We should do that again. But I mustn't. But I want to. But you can't. But I have been murdered.
Why is Chef not running for the hills right now?
I must go.
Okay, let me just get your number before you go so we can, I can, we can do that again.
Jeff! Are you this thirsty? My guy. Zero self-preservation skills.
That's it. Okay, Guillermo.
He's sparkling, you look great.
How it opens all by itself, it's so cool.
Oh, it is cool. What a creepy looking motherfucker. They're like, "Yeah, that's my honey boo." Oh, poor Chio!
Quite scary.
I have risen again.
Hello, Nadja.
Hello.
Lazlo?
Yes, I seem to remember him having genitals.
No, never, that is why he was such a good lover.
He's like a little candle.
To an eternal future. Sin.
What?
It's a documentary crew, they're cameras.
He's looking at us!
Centuries have passed and you have not conquered the new world.
Oopsie.
You hide in the shadows.
But they're doing stuff in the shadows.
Staten Island. Is this Staten Island the seat of power in the new world?
It is where the boat dropped us off.
Down with the old ways.
It didn't go any further than that.
I must slumber. But when I awaken, we will rule this Staten Island.
Yeah, you will! But isn't it gonna wake up again in another 500 years?
Lazlo, Baron, it's Nando.
Well, sleep with him, maybe then he'll remember your name.
We don't conquer the new world, it's going to kill us.
Basically, we're fucked.
Fucked.
You're a glum Guillermo?
No.
Yes? You think that I've forgotten that tonight is a special occasion for you as well, haven't you?
What do you mean? Don't get his hopes up.
Does not an anniversary deserve a reward? Recognizing your years of service?
No way.
I'm ready, master.
Good. Prepare yourself.
What are we doing? It's a mystery, isn't it?
Happy anniversary Guillermo.
Oh no, poor Guillermo.
Made from glitter. Look, it's you. I need you vampire. And look who's next to you.
What a little bitch!
You can put it in your depressing room. And you deserve it, two years of service.
Two years?
10 years of service, 10.
10 years of service?
Huh, time flies.
Okay.
Oh Guillermo, gonna take her revenge? Oh, no, he can't do it. Ah, that was the first episode! Now onto episode 2!
All this walking and walking and walking Guillermo, you never tire of it.
But unfortunately, he can't fly.
Vampires love virgins, it's their favorite food. And I've managed to find a group with an extremely high ratio of virgins.
So, LARPing, as you probably know, stands for live action role playing.
You will give me the scroll.
Sure does, hon.
Well, obviously they are all virgins, so good work there.
Thank you, master.
Shh, Guillermo, you spooked the virgins! Your accent!
Your accent?
Why do they ignore the little female one?
They're mean.
Your mead tastes like griffin piss.
I don't want these virgins. They are going to taste too sad. If you eat the mean one, you're gonna be mean all evening. No thank you, this is a bowl of rotten fruit.
That's so funny that they take off on their victims' like moods.
Be strong, sweet little one. Someday they will all be dead and you will do a shit on all of their graves.
Well, that's something to look forward to. I love this song so much, it's so fun. And it's cool to see a New York show have like an actual intro part. Usually it's just the title and then that's it.
An ancient vampire move into the house and it's made things a little challenging. He expected us to have conquered the new world, I don't remember him ever mentioning it.
The last time he and the Baron were making love, he said something to me. "If you ever get to the new world, my dear, take over the land and subjugate the entire population, otherwise I'll have your head." I couldn't pay attention because he was doing that thing where he pays a lot of attention to your area.
Thing is, he's got this irritating habit of giving you orders just at the moment of climax. So you're both there in the moment and then he barks an order, you heard what?
Ooh, what? Nothing.
I beg your pardon!
What are you saying?
And he never repeats what he said. He expects you to have listened during the climax.
So I guess we're conquering the new world now.
Ooh, how are you gonna do that?
Careful of the spider house. You wouldn't like it if a spider came and dusted your house, would you Guillermo?
Guess not.
Um, hi.
She's so creepy. She can hear everything we say.
So do the cameras, sweetie.
He's worse than Guillermo. Always there. Conquer North America.
He actually said the new world.
No, he specified Staten Island.
The entirety of North America.
And that would include Canada. What the fuck would anyone want with Canada?
Apparently there's a...
Rude!
We could poison the humans' milks with witches piss.
Uh, how would that work?
Oh gross, please don't do that.
What were you guys talking about? Can I join?
No, so sorry.
Why did I let him live with them?
Well, it sounds like you want to talk to the local leaders.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I can help with that.
Or the local leaders.
Show us the way, Colin Robinson. Let our journey to total domination begin this very evening!
Yes! And they're taking the bus! I love it so much.
Everyone kind of focuses on the day part of Daywalker, but actually, no one focuses on the walker part. You know, there's a lot of walking.
But then get off the bus and start walking.
Bad break.
They're never gonna be able to find the place. Of course, you can always have buses that are one tier, two tier, but you never see three tier buses.
They're on the top, very subtle, they're blending in.
These are the ones who rule over the local peasants?
Yes, isn't this wonderful? No.
Yeah, very wonderful.
I come here every week. It's a smorgasbord of banality and despair.
My favorite snacks.
I'd like to see the construction of a huge opaque dome the size of the city, covering the city, blocking out all sunlight.
Ooh!
Uh, our zoning laws should go, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr.
He's like, "Yes, I'm full, this is delicious."
Greetings, mortals. I will make this quick.
Hi.
hereby demand the complete and total supplication of this governing body to my command. Submit and receive mercy.
Nope, rejected.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Nando, but this session is specifically about issues for... You are entirely welcome to join.
Fantastic, great, oh, when would that be?
In about two months.
Now, how best to describe Nando? I would say that he's blessedly unburdened with the complications of a university education. But give him an axe and he's second to none.
You just call him dumb as bricks!
Don't let him fucking see this.
Yeah, where is this airing?
Where lies Brabla Zaro's weakest point?
Her Achilles heel.
So it's her foot? Well, that's simple, I know exactly what to do.
I meant in Greek math.
I know exactly where her foot is.
Doug Peterson is looking to unseat her in the upcoming elections. Some people think he has a chance.
The streak of piss with the case?
Yeah.
Shall we kill him as a warning?
No. Let's use him as a pawn. But then I will visit Brabla Zaro under cover of night.
And kill her?
Where's Nadja?
Oh, is she gonna take her under her wing?
I remember how it feels to be powerless and disrespected. Back home in my village, I had many strikes against me. And we were so poor that we used to use donkey dung for fuel. And when the donkey dung ran out, we would have to burn the donkey. So yes, I don't know what it feels like to be mocked and teased and to cry myself to sleep at night by the light of a burning donkey. Are those little dog shits not...
That is so fucking sad.
I didn't come here to make friends. Well, that's bullshit, that's exactly what I came here to do.
Yeah?
Oh, I'm watching my little granddaughter for the night.
What a lovely little nibble she would be.
I'm sorry.
Stay away from the child, please.
And may I say, you are a credit to the women's suffragette movement. And you're also very easy on the eye. Glad to see your foot injury isn't slowing you down.
My what?
Your foot.
Oh Lazlo, sweetie!
Those who you trust cannot be trusted, but I am here to help you with that.
Oh, I see what he's trying to do, inter against the other guy.
I mean, the raccoon population is out of control.
You won't remember a thing about it. You, my darling, won't remember a thing about a damn thing.
Trying to...
Leave the poor baby alone!
To make Doug Peterson my personal agent of chaos. Peterson destroys Lazaro, Nando destroys Peterson, and the council...
Will fall?
That's a nice little bitch you've got there.
Pardon me?
You mean the dog?
A nice little bitch being led on a leash by a frightened little man. It reminds me of how you are led about on a leash by the human bitch, Brabla Zaro.
This is so good!
Tonight, before you drift into a slumber, you will hear a voice that will command your actions.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
Okay, that's it, we're done, we're good.
You're saying that would help me seduce men?
And destroy them. And the women too.
Oh.
They're all bi, I love it!
I have a boyfriend and we do stuff. I mean, we do stuff on camera because that's, that's the stuff he likes and that's the stuff that he tells me I like. You know, just college is like a really...
Jen!
Here I am and this, this beautiful older woman wants to take me on a sexual journey and like I...
Her face!
And you are just a fresh baby shot out of her mother's womb, glistening with light.
You!
Thank you.
Thank you!
You're sure you want to do this?
Is she gonna turn her?
I should be honest with you, I'm a virgin.
Oh no, why did you say that?
Maybe we should just start with mouth stuff? That's okay.
Yes, just mouth stuff. Shit! Oh shit, she's becoming a vampire!
Oh. Wowee zowee, that is...
Hey, she's calling it in the pit.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I always talk too much, oh!
And she's into it, I love Jen!
Here goes.
Jesus Christ!
Hello, my nighttime brother.
Oh!
Suck me!
What are you doing? It's not a rattlesnake! Fuck it up Lazlo, great musical talent.
Doug Peterson. Peterson? Peterson, Doug Peterson. Peterson.
Did you call me?
What?
I just heard.
If I need anything, I will call you, but not through the ether. Just by reading the yelling. Do you hear me call you?
I hear you. Great. Hi, dog.
That is so good!
So you're born, that is delicious. Why do they call it blood?
Because it's blood, honey.
It is the blood from my body, so I, I call it my blood.
You're just gonna leave her? You turn her into a vampire and just gonna leave her behind? Oh my god, that is messed up. She will take that as a threat Lazlo?
Is this gang-related activity? Is MS-13 sending a message?
I gave you those raccoons as a bloody gift.
This was a clear and direct threat to my well-being.
They will not be laughing now that I am about to unleash my hellhound, Doug.
Hellhound, that guy? I doubt it.
It's a grim portent of things to come if we don't surrender, you ignorant bitch.
Yes, Doug.
Jesus Christ!
I will rip your head from your body and I will hang your entrails from the traffic light on Highland Boulevard.
Oh, they're so bad at politics!
Heed my vision before it's too late! I have retrieved a message from a slouching beast in the night!
The man is quite obviously mad.
Someone's driven him mad.
Living with us?
No, I, I can't stand up right now if you know what I mean.
Oh gross, I wish I didn't know what you meant.
I'm finding off this very intense flu.
I think it's mono.
No, I don't think it's...
I don't like that, yucky, 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 yuck. That's how you're gonna end it, okay? Alright, so those were the first two episodes of season one. I really, really enjoyed both of them. This show is so funny, I love it so much. I love that they kept the mockumentary style, I really do love that type of comedy as well. I mean, one of my favorite sitcoms is Modern Family, so yeah, this is really, really fun, I'm glad they kept it. I love the vampires as well, I love all three of them plus Guillermo. Oh, I mean Colin, you know, it's, it's okay. Oh, I mean, Colin, you know, it's okay, but I think that's what they're trying to do with him. Like, they're just trying to make him annoying. He is funny, but he's definitely not like a favorite standout character at the moment. I really do love Lazlo so much, Nando and Nadja as well, and Guillermo. Guillermo is such a sweet little guy, and I feel so bad for him. But I'm also so curious whether they will actually ever turn him into a vampire or not. Of course, like a lot of the comedy comes from him being a familiar, and it's also just very interesting having him be a human and like be a main character. I think it's a very fun dynamic. I love it a lot, but I do wonder if they're ever gonna turn him into a vampire or not. Like, maybe in the series finale or something like that, not sure, but I hope he gets his dream. But also, I love him as a familiar, so that's a conundrum, because I do want the best for him, but I like that he's still a human. But yeah, this is a very interesting storyline for season one, or for the whole show, I don't know. The whole, like, conquering Staten Island and the entirety of the US, or maybe even Canada? I really wonder how that's gonna go, because obviously, we're not doing that, I'm assuming, anyway. We're gonna fail at that. So when the Baron next wakes up, what is he gonna do? What is he gonna say? Are we gonna have to kill him, or what? Also, I'm so curious how the Baron is, right? Because he looks messed up. I mean, we saw Peter look kind of rough back in the movie, and he was 8,000 years old. So I feel like this Baron must be even older than that, which just, like, does not compute. Even 8,000 years old, I'm just like, what? How? You're telling me there were people back then as well? Like, logically, I know that, but when you just really think about it, like, shouldn't people have been around since the year zero? Like, I know that's not true, obviously, but it's just like, 8,000 years, crazy. So yeah, I'm just very curious how the Baron is and what will happen when he wakes up again. Also, I love that, like, immediately, there are LGBTQ+ characters in this. Like, Jen was immediately down to sleep with Nadja, or at least do mouth stuff. Like, she didn't even go for hand stuff first. Like, she was just like, "Yeah, I mean, we can do mouth." Like, I don't wanna go too quickly, like, I'm a virgin, but like, mouth stuff? Totally fine. I just love her so much. Like, that's so funny. And you know, also Lazlo sleeping with the Baron, like, it's so good. I just love how diverse the show immediately is. It's so fun. But yeah, I'm so curious what's gonna happen with Jen. Will she become part of the group? Maybe she'll move in as well? Or maybe she'll just strike out on her own? Will she kill the guy who was being mean to her and take a shit on his grave? Quite possibly. I would honestly love to see that, even though I really like that actor who was playing the mean guy, because he's in Abbott Elementary, and he's really funny in that. But here, I'm like, "Yeah, yeah, kill his ass. He's a meanie." I also wonder if we're ever gonna see Jeff again, only because I recognize the actor, and he was the main character in Limitless. So I'm just curious to see if he'll have a bigger role. I mean, will he have just been in one episode, like, a very quick scene, or will he come back? We'll see. But yes, overall, this was a great start of the season. I'm having a lot of fun with it. The humor is definitely right up my alley. I think it's comparable to the movie as well. So yeah, I'm having so much fun, and I'm very excited to continue with this show. And I also hope you guys enjoy this video. Thank you so much for watching. And there's always a huge shout-out to all my Patreons for supporting me. Thank you, guys, so much. You guys are the best. I really appreciate every single one of you. And if you guys enjoyed this video, make sure to give it a like, leave a comment down below, and subscribe to my channel. And I'll see you guys in the next one. Bye!